All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the October 10th meeting of the Garden Grove City Council. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Councilmember O'Neal.
I'm here.
Councilmember Tran.
Here.
Councilmember Dovin.
Present.
Councilmember Klumpenstein.
Here.
Councilmember Nguyen Penylosa.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Brightigam.
Here.
And Mayor Jones.
Here. May I ask Community Services Director John Montenges to do the invocation, followed by Councilmember Joe Dovin to lead us in the pledge.
Can everyone please stand and prepare yourself according to your faith? Dear God, we pray that all those that lead our city are granted wisdom and strength, and may their decisions that are made today be in keeping with the needs of others and help us to serve those needs. Most of all, keep us humble and upright as we make those decisions for the betterment of our community. Amen.
Shall we place the flag, hands over heart?
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Please be seated.
All right. Before we go on to presentations, I'd like to go out of order and pull items 3A through 3C from the consent calendar forward. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Call to vote.
We're going to do a roll call vote. Councilmember O'Neal?
Yes.
Councilmember Tran?
Yes.
Councilmember Dovin?
Aye.
Councilmember Klumpenstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen Penylosa?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brightigam?
Yes.
And Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
All right. Presentations, item 1A.
This evening, we have a community spotlight in recognition of Joe Hammer and Andrea Perez for being named the 2023-2024 Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce Man and Woman of the Year. And City Manager Lisa Kim will read that community spotlight.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. We take great pleasure recognizing two exceptional community members for their meaningful work in Garden Grove. With Joe Hammer and Andrea Perez, the 2023 Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce Man and Woman of the Year, please come forward. Every year, the Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce selects two dedicated service-oriented individuals who demonstrate community pride through their volunteer efforts, and it is the city's privilege to honor these two exceptional individuals. We will begin with Man of the Year, Joe Hammer. Joe, a United States Air Force and Army National Guard veteran, relocated his moving and storage business, California Relocation Services, Inc., to Garden Grove in 1995, and quickly became involved in the community by joining the Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce. He has been in business for over 30 years and was the California Moving and Storage Association president for several years. Currently, Joe is serving as treasurer for the Garden Grove Rotary Club, which he has been a member since 2003. He was the recipient of the Rotary International Paul Harris Fellow Award and recently received the Lifetime Achievement Award. Congratulations, Joe, on that. Joe is also involved in Healthy Aging Center Acacia and the Garden Grove Community Foundation. Next, we have our Woman of the Year, Andrea Perez. Andrea is the immediate past president and current director of the Community Services for the Garden Grove Strawberry Festival Association. Since 2017, she has served on the Garden Grove Parks, Recreation, and Arts Commissioner. Andrea has been an active member of the Parent Teachers Association as well as the Executive Board of the Garden Grove United Council of PTAs and received the prestigious Golden Oak Service Award for her contributions. Andrea has been part of the Chalks Lamp Lighter Guild for the past 10 years, and in 2016, she received the Silver Spoon Award from the Women's Division of the Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce for her work. Andrea is also involved in the Garden Grove Neighborhood Association, Cal State Fullerton Titan Parent and Family Association, Lubbock Foundation of Orange County, and more. At this time, the mayor and City Council would like to present a proclamation to Joe Hammer and Andrea Perez for their selection as the 2023 Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce Man and Woman of the Year. The city congratulates you both.
Oh, how nice.
Just look in the middle of them.
Don't blink.
This way. Thank you.
Last minute one.
That's an important one.
Yeah.
Okay, one, two, three, four, five.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we also have a representative from Janet Nguyen's office to present Joe and...
I can represent myself, if that's okay. Actually, we already gave you both at the chambers gala. I just want to say thank you. Who in Garden Grove doesn't know either one of you? And who in Garden Grove who's gone to the Garden Grove Strawberry Festival haven't seen you? So, we just want to, on behalf of the California State Senate, I want to thank you for your time, your dedication, your commitment to the residents of Garden Grove. For me personally, thank you for your friendship and your mentorship throughout the years, because, you know, I wouldn't be where I'm at without those friendships and those mentorships throughout the years. But more importantly, though, is you've dedicated thousands of hours for over a decade or two or three for the residents of Garden Grove. And so, so well deserved, and congratulations again.
Speak, speak.
Oh, yeah.
Humble servants.
All right.
Microphone is yours.
Item 1B.
Item 1B is a community spotlight in recognition of Samantha Cabrera from Be Well OC in Garden Grove for receiving a First Responder Award from the Orange County Business Council, and City Manager Lisa Kim will provide that community spotlight.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. It's my pleasure to recognize and bring forward Samantha Cabrera from Be Well OC in Garden Grove's Mobile Response Team for receiving the First Responder Award from the Orange County Business Council. With Samantha Cabrera, please come forward. Samantha is a crisis intervention specialist for the city's Be Well OC in Garden Grove's Mobile Response Team, who demonstrates exceptional customer service in all her clients in the community and community partners. In her role, she actively provides crisis intervention to client experiences substance abuse, psychological crisis, and homelessness. Last month, the Orange County Business Council hosted an inaugural First Responders Awards to recognize first responders in law enforcement, fire, healthcare that protect and serve the businesses, residents, and visitors of Orange County. Samantha was honored for assisting the Garden Grove Police Department respond to a suicide attempt. In April 2023, Samantha and her partner responded to a dispatch call regarding a suicide attempt in which bystanders described seeing a young woman in an emotional state on the roof of a nearby business, making threats to jump off. Through skilled de-escalation techniques, including compassionate communication, with validating the woman's emotions, Samantha successfully controlled the situation, and the Orange County Fire Authority safely removed the woman from the roof. As a result, the client willingly accepted immediate mental health assistance and was safely transported to the crisis stabilization unit under the care of Samantha and her dedicated team. Through an exceptional display of compassion from the responder and a collaborative effort between Garden Grove Police Department and the Orange County Fire Authority, the young woman received the support and allowed her to overcome her moment of depression. At this time, the mayor and City Council would like to present Samantha Cabrera with a certificate and a memento in recognition of her heroic actions and for receiving the First Responder Award from the Orange County Business Council. Congratulations.
One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you.
Yes.
Janet, did you want to do anything? No, okay. Sorry. Item 1C.
Item 1C is the legislative update from District 36 from California State Senator Janet Nguyen.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. I just want to thank you for allowing me the time and the opportunity to provide you and the residents of Garden Grove an update from the California State Legislature. As you know, I've been doing this almost every session after session ends. I would come to Garden Grove and all my other cities and just travel around the district just to talk about what has happened in Sacramento. It's always a pleasure to come back to my hometown. A Garden Grove Argonaut graduate as well. Yes, there are some Pacifica up there, but I will forgive you. You know, I'm okay. You know, a little, you know, and, oh, and Rancho. Oh, man. Oh, man, this is a house divided here. So, boy, oh, boy, oh, boy. But at the end of the day, my high school is called Garden Grove High School, so, you know. It is, you know, it's like, as I mentioned, it's always a pleasure to come back home. As you said, I'm proud to be a part of our community, one that is very tight-knit and has a long history of service to our community, as you can see with our Men and Woman of the Year. I mean, they're vegans of what is the best of Garden Grove is about, is serving others. I'm, as mentioned, you know, I'm here throughout the years just because I believe that it is my responsibility to keep you informed of both this past legislative session and the work that we've been doing Sacramento on your behalf. I currently represent a little over a million people in the 36th Senate District, and of that, three cities are in Los Angeles County, and so that is Artesia, Hawaiian Garden, and Cerritos. And then we head into Orange County cities, which I represent half of the city of Brenner Park, La Palma, all of La Palma, Cypress, Los Alamos, Rosmore, Stanton, 90% of Garden Grove, Westminster Midway City, and Fountain Valley. Then we go to the entire coast of Orange County, the 41 mile, beautiful miles of Orange County. And we start at Seal Beach, Huntington Beach, Newport Beach, Laguna Beach, Dana Point, Capistrano Beach, and San Clemente, which really comes down to is I represent half of Orange County cities in my Senate District. As you know, as your senator, we are in Sacramento nine months of the year. I travel to Sacramento every week, Monday through Thursday, and then we come back. We just ended our session on September 14th. The governor has till, October 14th, the end of this week, to either sign the bills, veto it, or do nothing with it. And if he does nothing with it, it then becomes law. Out of the seven years that I've been there, I don't recall one that he, that whether Governor Jerry Brown or Governor Gavin Newsom has done nothing with it. So, he's got a little, over 2,700 bills that were, 2,700 bills that were introduced this session by both houses. A little over 1,000 was sent to the governor's desk for signature. So, he still has a few more hundred of bills left to sign or do something with it. The, in Sacramento, I serve on eight committees. Of those eight, I serve on, as vice chair of Business and Profession. So, anybody who has a business license, I'm sorry, not license, a professional license with the state of California, so if you're realtors, a general contractor, you know, you name it, nail technician, whatever it is, every scope of practice goes through the Business and Profession Committee. The next one is I am Vice Chair of Senate Health. So, everything that has to do with your healthcare goes to our committee, including healthcare insurance as well. I'm Vice Chair of Elections and Constitutional Amendment. So, anything that's going to go before the ballot next year goes through our committee, and anything that has, which is usually is changing the constitution of the states. And anything that has to do with elections, whether that's what you as elected officials have to be governed by, also goes through that committee. I'm also Vice Chair of Insurance Committee, which we all know right now currently this insurance business, the insurance industry in California is really shaky. It will, it's coming down to a point where there's folks who cannot buy, who cannot find insurance to buy for their home, commercial, and it's going to get to where automobile is going to be affected as well. So, some folks who are trying to buy into insurance for your commercial or your housing, especially if you're in an area that is fire zone area, wildfire, like Laguna Beach in part of my district, they're not able to find insurance to buy. But it is creeping into now, into the, also looking at the auto industry. A few weeks ago, the governor has signed an executive order to assist the insurance commissioners to move forward and find solutions to stabilize the industry for consumers like ourselves in California. The other committees I sit on is Banking and Finance, Transportation Environmental Quality, which obviously deals with everything that has to do with the coast of California, and then I also sit on Government Organization as well. And a couple of joint special committees that I sit on, LoSan, it has to do with the rail system that connects San Clemente to San Diego, which is, I mentioned San Clemente is in my district. And I'm also the first Orange County legislator to be appointed to the Fishery and Aquaculture Committee. That committee does oversee the entire coast of California and anything related to the ocean. So, from recreational fishing to commercial fishing, you name it, whether looking at fast-tracking windmill farms on our coast to shutting down certain areas of the beach or the, to preserve, preservation, goes through this committee. There's five senators and five assembly members. And we will be hosting a, the first hearing in Orange County for that committee as well. During this past session, we've worked to address many of the issues facing our state, impacting our neighborhoods directly, from homelessness, public safety, to housing and mental health. My colleagues and I have introduced various legislation to tackle what matters we believe is important to you, your family, your businesses, and our community. I may give a sample of some bills, because over 1,000 were sent to the governor and over 2,700 were introduced. So, if there's anybody who, like yourself and the city staff, or anybody who's watching this, this presentation is, please feel free to reach out to my office. And if there's a bill that you're monitoring and want to know if the governor signs it by the end of this week, or if you want to see if it's be reintroduced for next year, please reach out to our office, and we'll definitely give you the information. Some bills that dealt with homelessness, which has been held at some of the committees, but you'll see that the mindset of the legislators, accountability when it comes to homelessness. The state of California has spent over double-digit in billions of dollars in the last few years for homelessness. All those money goes to the county. And the state has no jurisdiction over the county and how they spend the money. And so, right now is that the governor this last year has stated to the cities and the counties, if you're not going to give me an accountability of what you're doing with these money, we're withholding all the money. And so, a few things that you're, that we, that has been introduced this year will most likely continue to go forward next year is accountability. Where are these money spending, has been spent? How much have they been spent? Where have they been spent? Are they working? Are they not working? What agencies are spending it? Basically, looking holistically from above is what are, where are the money going, and are they helping? Because I have to be honest with you, when I travel across my district, I don't see anybody who can tell me, oh, my goodness, Senator, the homelessness problem is gone. It's not. I've not seen one person, and I'm more than happy if there's somebody out there who can tell me that. I would like to know that, because I would like to know where that is. And so, that's a lot of things that's going on when it comes to homelessness. Educations, lots of things going on with education. I've been very honored to have worked with the Kiwanis Club in Garden Grove for over a decade in making sure that we have defibrators in your public, public city areas and also our, our school districts as well. There are occasional times that I've also funded those, recharging of those defibrator in Garden Grove throughout the years, for the last, actually, almost 20 years now that I've been doing that. One other thing that the bill that has passed is that it will require all sports, youth sports organization to have access, to ensure that there is access to a defibrator going forward, because it's needed. You've heard LeBron James' son almost die if there wasn't a defibrator. So, it doesn't discriminate who you are and how athletic you would be and how healthy you are. It can happen to any of our children or any young adults that are playing sports. So, that's one. The second one is, the next part I want to move into is public safety. One of the things that I've been working very aggressive this year is when it comes to fentanyl. Fentanyl is the number-one killer to young adults from the ages of 18 to 45 in this country. We are literally watching a whole generation vanish before our eyes if we don't do something. Over 100 Californians die per week from fentanyl. By the end of this year, it'll be at least 6,000. There are more people killed from fentanyl than there were COVID, the Vietnam War, Korea War. More Americans are dying every day, and we need to get a handle on this crisis. One other thing that we have done, not only just legislation, but I will be traveling around the district and informing parents and students about the fentanyl crisis. Fentanyl is dubbed as "one pill kills within four minutes." One pill kills in four minutes. One milligram of fentanyl can kill an individual. One milligram is a grain of sand. That's how potent and how dangerous fentanyl is. So, what I'm asking you and everybody else who's watching this, to help me, do me a favor today or tomorrow. Every child you know, because fentanyl is not creeping to 10 years old. My son's 10 years old. I have two boys, 10 and a 12. They're making fentanyl to look alike Skittles. They're making fentanyl to look alike Smarty Candies. Halloween's around the corner. So, I'm asking you to do this. Is one, have a conversation with your children and have a conversation with your family member who are adults. Because if you don't, and it doesn't matter if they're straight-A students, never done drugs in their life. Most of the folks who die from fentanyl never went and sought for fentanyl. They did not know. And a lot of the children dying from fentanyl is because of Snapchat. They're going on Snapchat, being befriended by somebody, and then they get injured. Great athlete gets injured and was afraid to tell mommy and daddy that they need a painkiller, a pain medicine from the pharmacy. They go and here's somebody they've known for two years on Snapchat. Hey, I've got something really cool. You should try it. It just takes it away real quick. They go and get it, and they never wake up again. This is not a story that I'm making up. It's hundreds of stories, hundreds of parents, family members who've traveled to Sacramento to testify on behalf of their children and their family member. We have one very, if you don't think that's happening in your neighborhood, you're so wrong. So, there is a conversation. It's not a fun one, but something that's necessary. These are students that are heading to Harvard, Stanford, MIT, never done drugs, straight-A students in their entire life are no longer with us because of one small mistake. Just tell your children, your family members, it's okay. You need a pain medicine, we'll go get it in the pharmacy. Don't go out on the street. That's really something that I've been traveling across. But we're proud to, though, is there's a bill that I have, a principal author that is waiting for the governor, hoping that he would sign. It's taken me three years to get where I am today with that bill, and it is basically those who possess a fentanyl with intent to sell at minimum one kilogram of fentanyl. One kilogram is 10,000 pills. 10,000 pills will kill half a million people. You will be put to jail for an extra three years, minimum, depending on how many kilo you're going to be carrying. We are going to hold drug dealers accountable. We're not going to stand here and allow them to possess that amount of fentanyl that can kill half of my entire district. And our sheriff, Ashley, he has confiscated last year alone over 400 kilo, which would have killed most of folks in California. 36-plus million people would have died if that wasn't out there, I mean, if it was kept out there. So, it's a serious matter, and I ask for your help in that. The other part is that we, in regards to Narcan, I mean, in fentanyl, is that there's a bill that will require going forward, pending what the governor does with it, is require all public places, including schools, colleges, and concert venues, amusement parks, and stadiums, to maintain unexpired Narcan type. And so, as I mentioned, we will be traveling around the district. We will also be working with nonprofits and organizations in the state of California to arm parents with Narcan as well, and we're going to train them on how to use it, because we're, every one of us are somewhere in public some, at any given time. And an overdose can take you down within four minutes. The other part in terms of, that has been signed by the governor, something we worked with, is making sure that those who sex-traffick minors will be put in jail. I'm sorry. You have no right to sex-traffick anybody, but now we're talking about minors. If you don't believe it's happening around our neighborhood, it's happening, especially in tourism areas. So, they, we are right now, it's across the state and across our nation, children are being abducted and being sex-trafficked. It's something that needs to be stopped and something that the governor has signed and agreed with us to making sure that going forward, anybody who wants to sex-traffick a minor or minors, you will be put in jail, and you're going to stay there. A few things in terms of business and economic, you know, some good news, some bad news. One bill would allow businesses who is being sued or there's claims against them to allow them to have 120 days to correct the matter. As you know, some, you know, a lot of small claims such as disability, and they would ask the businesses to pay off $5,000 so they'll go away. So, this is at least allow these businesses to have the time and the opportunity to correct the issue before having to go forward. That bill, and then there's one that would nearly, almost prohibits nearly every employer from concerning conviction history, which I didn't support. Because if a school district wants to hire an individual, I would like to know if that person has been convicted of child molestation. I mean, I don't think we want an individual like that at a school district or at a preschool or daycare center or sports area with children. So, I, you know, there's some good news and some bad news. So I, I, you know, there are some good news and some bad news. Um, the other part, when I was talking about the, um, the homelessness, one of the thing that you'll see on the March ballot, which we all supported, is looking at the MHSA funding that was voted by the Mental Health Services Act that was voted by the voters twenty years ago, which allowed the funding that the counties are being able to use for homelessness and mental health. But there's some flaws to that back then, and we have an opportunity to correct it, which is to hold counties and agencies who does have mental health and receive mental health money to tell us where they're spending the money. Because right now, the, the state hands are tied. We don't, we can't just go and say, hey, we want an audit. We have to have the voters to actually approve it. And so, you know, I'm hoping that when you look at what goes on in the ballot, especially when it comes to mental health, um, to look at it and, and allow us to correct or to fix some of the things that we need, which is accountability for these funding. Um, and there's a lot of other bills that has been put forward to the state legislature, lots of ballot measures that's going to be coming forward as well. But I, you know, to conclude, I just want to reaffirm, uh, my commitment to serving, uh, you and the families of our great city of Garden Grove. Um, you know, we've held several meet and greets. We've had, you know, Mayor Pro Tem, George Bredecombe at it, Councilman, um, John O'Neill, Cindy Tran, and Stephanie Koffelstein, um, in our district areas. And so you've been there with us and really it's just trying to get the community, you know, just giving them an, an update, whether it's from state side or the city side. And so we appreciate, we will continue to do that. Um, a lot of them, we've had great attendance, um, in the dozens of folks. And so it's always great for me to hear directly from the residents. We've, you know, love always being able to go to the Garden Grove Strawberry Festival. And so we appreciate the city's support, the city staff, our, um, personnel, our public safety staff as well. Because while all of us are enjoying it, they're actually working. And so we do appreciate it as well as all the volunteers, uh, you know, being able to be a part of so many activities in Garden Grove. We're just very excited. Um, I want to also state, you know, I've got incredible staff. Our district office is in Huntington Beach, and the reason for that is we try to find the most central location. So from Huntington Beach to the very not tip, northern tip of my district, Artesia, is about fifty minutes without traffic. And from Huntington Beach to the very southern end of my district, San Clemente is about an hour and ten minutes without traffic. So we try to find the really middle tip of the district so that, um, you know, to try to assist anybody who would like to come to our office. Our di- our district office is three zero one Main Street, Suite two twelve in the city of Huntington Beach. So it is on Main Street, right? It's more the northern end of the pier part of, of Huntington Beach. And our phone number is seven one four three seven four four thousand. Very simple, three seven four four thousand. Uh, this is ours. So right now, we are in the process of looking at bills to author for next year. So any residents, you have an idea, please let us know. Uh, the best bills that I've been able to have the honor of authoring and also getting, having the governor sign comes from the residents and it's coming from community leaders. And so we would appreciate any suggestions or ideas. Feel free to, um, communicate with our office. Again, uh, Mayor, thank you. And thank you to the council for giving me the opportunity to address your, um, city today. And I apparently got the red, um, memo as well. Uh, red, red and black memo. So, you know, we're very excited. And so thank you again for, for allowing me to speak.
Thank you very much. Okay. See you, Joe.
Thank you, Joe.
All right. Um, we had already pulled forward three B and three C from consent. So I'll turn it back to Lisa to read the proclamation for Red Ribbon Week, the first one.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council. It's my pleasure to read the proclamation celebrating National Red Ribbon Week. And if I may ask, um, from our Garden Grove Elks Lodge, if Therese Caso and the Moose could join us up front?
No.
Does our moose need some help? Thank you. Whereas the, the wide range, the wide ranging negative consequences of drug abuse affects individuals, their families and friends, and is felt throughout the nation. And whereas it is imperative that the message addressing the prevention of drug abuse be visible and unified. And whereas National Red Ribbon Week, celebrated by communities across the nation, offers an opportunity to demonstrate a commitment to this year's theme, to celebrate life and live drug-free. And whereas community-based organizations, along with schools, government, law enforcement, businesses, media, healthcare providers, and religious institutions are called upon to demonstrate a commitment to celebrate life and live drug-free by wearing red ribbons and participating in drug prevention activities. Now therefore be it resolved that the Garden Grove City Council does hereby proclaim October twenty-third through the thirty-first as Red Ribbon Week and encourages participation in drug prevention, education, activities throughout the year, making a visible statement that we are strongly committed to avoid, to a drug-free lifestyle. Thank you. Thank you.
Tina?
Yes.
Get the red, the red coats.
No, oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Let's have a few reps.
Have to back him up a little, Steve.
Oh, I see. We're trying to avoid the horns. Okay, I got you. All right, all right. Here we go. Keep snapping away.
Thank you, Lee Roy. It's an honor having you here.
Thank you.
I'm gonna, yeah, I'm gonna speak. Good evening, Mayor Jones, County Council. Thank you for having us and thank you for this wonderful proclamation. We couldn't be more happier than to accept such an, such an amazing award. Um, I'm sure everybody, you know, has heard of Red Ribbon Week. It's, it's national. It's a national program. But, um, I'm not sure if a lot of people really know where Red Ribbon Week started. So I just have a short little synopsis of where red, how Red Rib- Red Ribbon Week became is what it is today. It all started with Enrique Kiki Camarino, who was born in Mexicali Baja, California on July twenty-sixth, nineteen forty-seven. In nineteen fifty-six, he and his family moved to nearby Callexico, California. In nineteen seventy, Camarino joined the Callexico PD, where he was later assigned to El Centro, where he worked as a narcotics, narcotics investigator for Imperial County. In nineteen seventy-four, Enrique became a special agent with the DEA. Camarino wanted to make an impact in his country, but his family was very worried. His mother even tried to talk him out of becoming a DEA agent. But Camarini, Cam, I'm sorry, Camarina, uh, refused. He wanted to say, even if only one person, I can make a difference. During the early nineteen eighties, Enrique was assigned to Mexico, where he's on the trail of Mexican marijuana and cocaine drug traffickers. In nineteen eighty-five, during Enrique's time in Mexico, he became dangerously close to exposing top leaders of a multi-billion dollar drug pipeline in the Mexico country. Because of this, he was scheduled to be moved to another assignment in nineteen eighty-five. But however, nineteen eighty-five, on February seventh, at two P M., he was kidnapped by five men as he left the American consulate, Guadalajara, Mexico, en route to have lunch with his wife. The kidnappers drove him to a residence in the western section of Guadalajara, where Kiki was interrogated and tortured for more than thirty hours before the kidnappers brutally killed Enrique Kiki Camarina. Sadly, this would be the last time anyone but the kidnappers would see him alive. Special, Special Agent Enrique Camarina was found a month later on March fifth, nineteen eighty-five. Enrique Camarina's legacy lives on. He left behind his wife, Geneva, Mika Camarina, and their three sons, Enrique Junior, Daniel, and Eric. Camarina sacrificed his life for the fight against drugs, and members of the community wanted to show something to remember and honor Kiki. Thus, by wearing red satin ribbons, this is where the Red Ri- Red Ribbon Week was born. Red Ribbon Week started in Camarina's hometown of Callexico, but soon gained monumentum across California. Nineteen eighty-eight, the first National Red Ribbon Week was created by the National Family Partnership and continues to coordinate the campaign for families, schools, communities across the nation each year. Presently today, people and communities across the country continue to celebrate National Red Ribbon Week. The Elks Organization through the DAP Drug Awareness Program is the largest volunteer drug awareness program in the United States, currently striving to work within our community of Garden Grove to promote drug awareness. We are very proud of our dedicated Army of Volunteers, who freely give their time and talents to this most noble cause. The Elks are committed to eliminating the use and abuse of illegal drugs by all members of society and believe that to ensure a bright future for our community and our country, it is essential to our children to be educated and represent what, what can be a drug-free environment. So with this, I would like to say, Garden Grove Elks, number nineteen fifty-two, respectfully thanks Mayor Jones and the Garden Grove City Council for presenting officially proclaiming the city of Garden Grove, recognized for National Red Ribbon Week, October twenty through third through the thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. And next, a proclamation regarding Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council. If I may ask, a couple of representative from, from Thomas House, if I may ask, Shaquoya Green Long, CEO, and Martha Figueroa to join, come up to the front, as well as from Radiant Futures, um, we have Dr. Nefta Pareda, if, if you can also join the front, come to the front while I read the proclamation. Recognizing Domestic Violence Awareness Month, October twenty twenty-three. Whereas October is annually recognized as National Domestic Violence Month. Whereas domestic violence knows no boundaries and affects women, men, and children of every age, background, and belief. Whereas domestic violence weakens the foundation of our community and impacts the lives of families and future generations. Whereas stopping the cycle of violence requires not only the strength and courage of survivors, but also the support and the involvement of all members of the community. And whereas domestic, domestic violence programs in California provide essential lifesaving services for survivors, their children, and communities. Whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides
support of Thomas House and to all community organizations that support and protect women,
an excellent opportunity for citizens to learn about preventing domestic violence
men, and children from being abused. Um, it is very, very serious. And as we continue
and show support for numerous organizations and individuals who provide critical advocacy services and assisting, assistance to victims. And whereas during the Domestic Violence Awareness
to do this work, we are grateful for council members like yourself to continue to support us. Thank you.
Month, we reaffirm our dedication to working together to end domestic violence. Now therefore
Mayor Jones and City Council, thank you very much for inviting us and for proclaiming
be it resolved that the city of Garden Grove City Council does hereby proclaim October twenty twenty-three as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and urge residents of our
Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Uh, since nineteen seventy-six, Radiant Futures, formerly
community to work together to eliminate domestic violence from our community.
W T L C, has been working with survivors of domestic violence and human trafficking. And we, we work in all the community and we've been working really closely with, uh, Garden Grove, the social services here in Garden Grove. We provide personal empowerment classes for, uh, men, women, and children. We provide parenting classes. And we just, we are thrilled to be able to work with, uh, not only the city, but with our partner organizations here in Garden Grove. So on behalf of Radiant Futures, the domestic violence community, and all the survivors, thank you very much for allowing us to be here and for proclaiming, uh, Domestic Violence Awareness Month in October. Thank you. And we'd love to stay for the rest of the meeting. Some of us have events and then some of us have to go pick up the tacos for the family. Um, the text is ringing. So thank you very much for having us today.
To just leave, like, party and run.
Take everybody with you. All right. Well, now good to oral communications. And I do have a couple of cards, starting with Connor Medina.
Well, good evening, Mayor Jones and honorable council members. My name is Connor Medina and I am the Regional Public Affairs Manager for the League of California Cities, Orange County Division, or CAL Cities. Formerly, uh, Government Affairs Manager at the Orange County Business Council. Congratulations again to Ms. Cabrera, uh, from, from Bewell for being recognized tonight. And she should be really proud of herself for all the work that she does. Um, thank you so much for the opportunity to be here tonight in Garden Grove. I'm joined by my division president, our division president, Marshall Goodman, Mayor Pro Tem with the city of La Palma. I've had the pleasure of meeting many of you, um, in this role and in my prior role, but I'd like to formally introduce myself as your regional rep at your service if you need anything from CAL Cities. And I look forward to maintaining the communication between the city, me, um, and our staff in Sacramento. Councilmember Nguyen Penalosa has especially been a champion for CAL Cities, serving as president of our Orange County Division and currently representing Orange County as a whole on the CAL Cities Board of Directors, which is comprised of elected officials and city staff from all across the state. I want to ensure that Garden Grove still has a seat at the table after Councilmember Nguyen Penalosa terms off, um, and make sure that you are all aware of the opportunities that you have to get involved yourself as well. And before I get into those opportunities, I'd like to briefly touch on the value of CAL Cities membership, the why you should be engaged. We are the leading advocacy and education resource for cities in Orange County and statewide, fighting for local control in Sacramento. Um, we have, uh, four hundred and seventy-six members statewide out of the four hundred and eighty-two cities in the state and thirty-three members of the thirty-four cities, uh, thirty-three cities of the thirty-four cities in Orange County. For the past, uh, six fiscal years, CAL Cities has returned an average of six hundred and twenty-three dollars for each dollar invested through your membership. This is because of funding allocations and structures that CAL Cities was a leader in securing for Garden Grove. And if you're a numbers geek like me, I have a PowerPoint slide that'll give you all the details about how that is calculated. But it really is, it was really astonishing for me to see the value that CAL Cities provides in that regard and, and the years, the decades of work that CAL Cities has, has put in over our one hundred and twenty-five year history to, to deliver for you as cities, um, and make sure that you get your fair allocation of money from the state and federal governments.
Some of us have events, and then some of us have to go pick up the tacos for the family. The text is ringing, so thank you very much for having us today.
To just leave, like, party and run.
Take everybody with you. All right, well now good to oral communications, and I do have a couple cards, starting with Connor Medina.
Well, good evening, Mayor Jones and honorable council members. My name is Connor Medina, and I am the Regional Public Affairs Manager for the League of California Cities Orange County Division, or CAL Cities. Formerly Government Affairs Manager at the Orange County Business Council, congratulations again to Ms. Cabrera from B-Well for being recognized tonight, and she should be really proud of herself for all the work that she does. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here tonight in Garden Grove. I'm joined by my division president, our division president, Marshall Goodman, Mayor Pro Tem with the city of La Palma. I've had the pleasure of meeting many of you in this role and in my prior role, but I'd like to formally introduce myself as your regional rep at your service if you need anything from CAL Cities, and I look forward to maintaining the communication between the city, me, and our staff in Sacramento. Councilmember Nuen Penalosa has especially been a champion for CAL Cities, serving as president of our Orange County Division and currently representing Orange County as a whole on the CAL Cities Board of Directors, which is comprised of elected officials and city staff from all across the state. I want to ensure that Garden Grove still has a seat at the table after Councilmember Nuen Penalosa terms off, and make sure that you are all aware of the opportunities that you have to get involved yourself as well. And before I get into those opportunities, I'd like to briefly touch on the value of CAL Cities' membership, the why you should be engaged. We are the leading advocacy and education resource for cities in Orange County and statewide, fighting for local control in Sacramento. We have four hundred and seventy-six members statewide out of the four hundred and eighty-two cities in the state, and thirty-three members of the thirty-four cities, thirty-three cities of the thirty-four cities in Orange County. For the past six fiscal years, CAL Cities has returned an average of six hundred and twenty-three dollars for each dollar invested through your membership. This is because of funding allocations and structures that CAL Cities was a leader in securing for Garden Grove. And if you're a numbers geek like me, I have a PowerPoint slide that'll give you all the details about how that is calculated, but it really is, it was really astonishing for me to see the value that CAL Cities provides in that regard, and the years, the decades of work that CAL Cities has put in over our one hundred and twenty-five-year history to deliver for you as cities, and make sure that you get your fair allocation of money from the state and federal governments. From ensuring that you had your fair share of the American Rescue Plan dollars, which was forty-eight point three million dollars, to ongoing revenue protections through Proposition Twenty-two that was passed back in twenty-ten, CAL Cities remains a dedicated advocate for Garden Grove. And something that I really appreciate about CAL Cities is that it really is a membership-driven organization, and one of the best ways that you as council members or your staff can get involved is through our policy committees. So there are seven policy committees. They focus on all the different municipal areas that the Senator basically covered in her remarks, the issues that you as a city regularly encounter. They include transportation, housing, and community development, transportation, communications and public works, housing and community development, community services, environmental quality, governance and labor relations, revenue and taxation, and public safety. So whatever you are most interested in, I definitely encourage you to apply and represent not just your city, but Orange County on each of these committees. Each of these committees will help to revise, build upon, and advance our entire organization's policy platform. One of my major priorities is ensuring that Orange County's voice is loud and clear, and that our priorities as a county translate into CAL Cities' priority at the state level. The deadline to apply for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four committees is this Friday. There are other ways to get appointed as well that I'd be happy to discuss with you. You can reach me at cmedina@calcities.org. That's C-M-E-D-I-N-A at calcities.org. If you have any questions or would like to learn more about the work that we do on your behalf and how you can be a part of that, I hope that you and your staff will continue to remain highly engaged with CAL Cities in twenty-twenty-four and beyond, and I look forward to working very closely with all of you in this role. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Connor, for coming. The Honorable Marshall Goodman.
Good evening, Mayor Jones, Council, and staff. I'm only going to take a couple seconds here. I know Connor went over, he gave you a lot of great information, a lot of the things that I was going to say. My name is Marshall Goodman from the city of La Palma. I'm the Mayor Pro Tem, and I also serve as the president of the Orange County Division for CAL Cities. As Connor mentioned, I'm filling the role that Councilmember Nuen Penalosa did two years ago, and actually, Councilmember Penalosa from Santa Ana, your other half, right, will be in this position two years from now. So I'm here just to introduce myself, and again, I get to appoint two members per committee, so if you have any interest in any committees, please do let me know. We meet quarterly as a board. I'd love to have you all come out. We're going to collaborate as a county. My goal is to mend the relationship between Sacramento and Orange County. It can be disgruntled at times, sometimes their fault, sometimes ours, but my goal is to engage in a conversation to make sure that we're getting everything done that we need to do. So with that, I left some cards, and feel free to email me or call me direct. My cell phone number's on there, you can text or call. So thank you. All right, have a great night.
Thank you, Marshall, for coming. We appreciate you guys. That's all the cards I have. Is there anyone else wishing to speak who did not submit a card? Nick Dibs.
Members of the City Council, Mayor Jones, members of the City Council, my name is Nicholas Dibs. You've heard the remarks from State Senator Janet Winn of the dangers of fentanyl and how Snapchat and social media is being used to provide the illegal drugs and other bad things that are going on. I've been coming to these council meetings and school board meetings, trying to sound the alarm, saying it takes a village to raise and protect children. And the wonderful work that the ELCS Club is doing and other groups are doing to bring awareness, but we need some leadership from the city. Because of major research, it is timely and effective that others and me are forming a bipartisan steering committee to address the harms of fentanyl, social media, cyberbullying, and blue light, et cetera, causing mental and health problems, because it takes a village to raise and save a child. And actions to do the right thing speak louder than words. If citizens would like, if citizens would like to possibly serve on the steering committee, please email me at nickdibsone, that's N-I-C-K-D-I-B-S-one at gmail dot com. You have this email that I've sent out, I'm going to run out of time, I don't have time to go through all of it, but basically, we need to do more, not less, and the council cannot just say, well, it's the school district's responsibility and pawn this off to them only. This is, we need, I've put in here an important suggestion based on what the U.S. Surgeon General is saying, based on what other people are saying, based on the meeting, special meeting that was held September twentieth at the Orange County Department of Ed with the Board of, County Board of Education, with experts and elected officials speaking about the harm being done by fentanyl, human trafficking, social media, too much screen time, cyberbullying, blue light, et cetera, et cetera. So I've been sounding the alarm here for a long time, but nobody seems to do anything as far as, I've suggested that the youth committee, or I wanted a youth commission, but you didn't do that, but now that you have the youth advisory or the youth committee, we need to get our youth, you need to add to that and make our peer-to-peer youth involved and be youth ambassadors who can share vital information with their peers. And so you have key bullet points here and suggestions, as well as links to recent resources and so on. So I'd like someone from the council to hopefully be on the steering committee, one or more, and the public watching this, feel free to email me at nickdibsone at gmail dot com. My website is dibsdigitalwellness dot org, and let's work, let's all work together and do more, we can, do more to prevent fentanyl, as the Senator has said, because it's very bad, and it's being spread around on social media. Thank you for listening.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak under oral communications?
Do I need a card or something? My name is Kurt Shasker, new to Garden Grove. The reason I'm here today is I'd like to point out that the single most important development in human history to promote human flourishing and extend our lifespan is sanitation, our sewer system, clean water. And we have a city at this point developed fifty, sixty, seventy years ago that we can't afford, not even close. Our sewer system is so decrepit that it would probably cost fifty thousand dollars per household to fix at this point. And it's getting worse. You probably see it as a mine item, how we have to fix it from time to time in little tiny sections, but three hundred miles, well, the numbers are mind-boggling. I'm not going to go into them. It's just ridiculous. And I don't want to sit here and say, oh, it's an impossible problem. It's not really an impossible problem. The problem that we have is our city footprint is larger than we can afford, and that's just the simple reality of our situation. We've inherited a city developed seventy years, sixty years ago. This is what we have. But at least we should acknowledge that we can't afford to sustain this. It's going to get worse and worse. We're going to have rust that was rolling down the street if we're not careful. That can happen any day, it's going to just be more likely in the future. And the only thing, the only thing that I would suggest today at least is to put the deferred maintenance of our sewer problems and our streets and our curbs and our streetlights, put that in the budget. At least we can acknowledge that we're in real, serious trouble, and maybe there's a champion here who will hear my words and, you know? For instance, the city of New York has five times our current population density. That's what we need to fix this problem. We just don't have enough people living here to afford our footprint. So again, I don't really have this easy solution, but we can't, we just can't keep jacking up the parking fines, those regressive, regressive taxes. We can't do that. That's just not fair to our lesser people. We can't keep increasing costs to build and keep increasing costs to use our parks. That's just, that's irresponsible. Maybe there's a champion here who could hear my words, and maybe we can have a better way to handle the fact that our city's falling apart. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak who did not submit a card? All right, seeing none, we will close oral communications and recess to successor agency. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Here.
Member Tran?
Yeah.
Member Dovin?
Here.
Member Nuen Penalosa?
Here.
Vice Chair O'Neill?
Here.
And Chair Jones?
Here. We already did oral communications, consent items, just receive and follow the minutes. Can I get a motion?
Second.
Call to vote?
Looks like I'm having a, oh, here we go.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right, any matters from agency members? Seeing none, we will adjourn back to City Council. And that takes us on to consent items. We already did three A through three C, so it's recommended that three D through three I be acted on simultaneously unless anyone would like to pull an item.
Move to approve?
A second.
Hold the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Public hearings, four A.
This evening, item four A is an introduction and first reading to consider adopting an ordinance approving amendment number A dash zero-three-seven dash twenty-twenty-three, and adoption of a resolution to consider approving general plan amendment number GPA dash zero-zero-two dash twenty-twenty-three that includes updates to the adopted twenty-twenty-one through twenty-twenty-nine housing element. And Community Development Director Nikki Wetz was here to do the introduction.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm very proud to introduce Maria Par and Chris Chung. They've worked very hard on our housing element update, and they're here tonight, hopefully, for the last mile to present it to you, so Chris Chung will be presenting.
Nikki, good evening, Mayor Jones and members of the City Council. Fair consideration tonight is a request, as recommended by the Planning Commission, to hold a public hearing and consider the adoption of a general plan amendment, which includes updates to the adopted twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-nine housing element, and an amendment to the land use element to change the land use designation of a property located at one-three-six-two-one Harbor Boulevard from industrial to international west mixed use, and to introduce and conduct the first reading of an ordinance of the City Council of the city of Garden Grove approving zoning map amendment number A dash zero-three-seven dash twenty-twenty-three to revise the city's official zoning map to implement the updates to the adopted housing element, and to clarify the sites intended to be included in the international west mixed use overlay and the industrial residential mixed use one overlay pursuant to ordinance number two-nine-two-five. The purpose of the general plan amendment and the zoning amendments is to comply with state law provisions and to resolve comments received from H C D. on the adopted twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-nine housing element in order to obtain H C D. certification of the city's housing element. On August seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, and August twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, city staff presented updates to the Planning Commission and City Council during their respective meetings, which were open to the public, and provided an overview of the housing element and the Rena methodology, highlighted community engagement efforts, provided an overview of the proposed revisions to the adopted housing element, and discussed the current status of the housing element and the next steps in the process. Prior to tonight's meeting, a link to the digital copy of the draft revised adopted twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-nine housing element was provided to the City Council and also made available on the city's housing element website. Over the past couple of years, the city officially submitted its housing element to H C D. for review, and the city has been committed to working with H C D. to ensure that this housing element receives certification, and throughout the process, staff has worked very closely with H C D. staff to ensure all remaining comments are addressed in full. The proposed amendment includes updates to certain sections in the housing element to address H C D.'s comments and requests, primarily to provide additional and updated data related to topics such as homelessness and housing development trends, developing a comprehensive criteria to demonstrate development feasibility of non-vacant lower-income sites, providing additional exhibits and maps, identifying the city's prior housing element accomplishments, and listing new and strengthened meaningful actions in the housing elements programs. On August fourteenth of this year, the city received a formal response letter from H C D. reporting the results of its review of the city's latest housing element submission, and H C D. found it to substantially comply with state housing element law and that it meets statutory requirements. The following includes updates, I'm sorry, highlights of actions necessary to implement the updates to the housing element. The housing element sites inventory identifies sites that demonstrate feasibility to be redeveloped with residential units. Because Garden Grove is an entirely built-out city with very limited vacant land available, a large majority of the properties in the sites inventory are underutilized non-vacant sites. H C D. staff requested additional analysis specifically for lower-income sites, demonstrating that existing uses on the non-vacant sites would not be an impediment to residential development. Their criteria for selecting sites to meet the lower-income Rena was then created to address suitability for lower-income sites. After applying the new criteria to the full list of site inventory properties, which includes well over two thousand properties, the list was re-reviewed to determine necessary revisions and updates to the sites inventory, which consisted of an addition of fifteen properties to the inventory. It also included removal of properties to address typos and redesignation of the Rena income category for a number of existing sites. These updates to the sites inventory addresses H C D.'s request for additional analysis of non-vacant sites for lower-income households, and also ensures the city's total Rena accommodates the housing need for all income levels. In conjunction with the updates to the sites inventory, an amendment to the city's general plan land use map is proposed to modify the designation of a property located at one-three-six-two-one Harbor Boulevard from industrial to international west mixed use to facilitate the property's inclusion into the sites inventory and to allow residential development. The city's official zoning map will be amended to implement and ensure consistency with the proposed updates to the housing element by covering one property with the international west mixed use overlay and ten properties with the industrial residential mixed use one overlay. The purpose of the mixed use overlay zone is to allow residential development and mixed use development in addition to uses allowed by the underlying zoning. The proposed amendment will also clarify sites that are intended to be included in the overlay zones to correct a clerical discrepancy involving fifteen properties that were shown on the adopted overlay map exhibits on the right, but were inadvertently not listed in the exhibit E. on the left, which lists all of the parcels to which the mixed use overlay zone was intended to apply. In November of twenty twenty-one, the City Council certified a Comprehensive Programmatic Environmental Impact Report, or E I R., for the focused general plan update and zoning amendments, which included the approval of the currently adopted housing element. The E I R. analyzed the potential environmental impacts of adding potential housing units to meet the Rena, and the proposed revised housing element, which H C D. has indicated meets the requirements of state law, calls for less units than what was previously analyzed in the E I R. The proposed revised housing element and the zoning map amendments are within the scope of the E I R. It would not result in any new significant impacts or a substantial increase in the severity of any previously identified significant impacts. Accordingly, staff believes that no further sequel analysis is required. As mentioned prior, the city has received H C D.'s letter of substantial compliance on the draft revisions to the adopted housing element, and should the City Council approve and adopt these amendments updates, the city would effectively then next obtain H C D.'s final certification of the housing element. Therefore, staff recommends that the City Council conduct a public hearing and adopt the attached resolution approving general plan amendment number GPA dash zero-zero-two dash twenty-twenty-three to revise and update the adopted housing element consistent with the changes reflected in the June twenty-twenty-three draft approved by H C D., and to make additional non-substantive typographical corrections, and to amend the general plan land use designation of the property located at one-three-six-two-one Harbor Boulevard from industrial to international west mixed use, and finally, to introduct and conduct the first reading of the ordinance approving amendment number A dash zero-three-seven dash twenty-twenty-three to revise the zoning map to implement the updates to the housing element and clarify the sites that were intended to be included in the international west and industrial residential mixed use one overlay zones. This concludes staff's report, and city staff along with the city's consultants are available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Colleagues, any clarification questions before we open? Okay, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? Oh, sorry, go ahead, Jim.
What is presently on that parcel that you cited?
The, it is the rear portion of, sorry, doesn't echo? I'm not sure, am I hearing myself echo? I'm sorry.
The rear portion is, it's actually a rear portion of an existing developed property. It's just a parking lot portion. It just was inadvertently not included in the original sites inventory, so we're just clearing this up so that the whole site is included in the sites inventory.
So we're just basically rectifying and administrating the whole site?
Correct.
All right, anyone wishing to speak on this public hearing item?
I'm Mayor Jones, members of the council. My name's Nicholas Dibs. It says here that there'll be nine, nineteen thousand two hundred and thirty-nine potential units. I, I hope that, and I don't know if it's in here, but you're, are you designating some of these for low income housing or not? In any case, we do have a shortage of affordable housing, so I'm hoping that, I don't know what kind of units these are, hopefully they're, I assume, multifamily units. With regard to our ADUs, I'm not sure if ADUs are included in this or not, but I do want to encourage the council and the Planning Commission and city staff to please consider having second story ADUs so that our footprint as far as the greenery, green space in our backyards and in properties and so on, that we can maintain our green space, keep the garden in Garden Grove and go up with ADUs as opposed to building in backyards and taking away the trees and the plants and so on. So we do need more housing, so I would be in favor of this. I don't know all the details. I hope that, and I don't know if the zoning is going to be single family homes or is it going to be multi-zone, fitting that many units in that space, I assume it's multifamily apartments or duplexes and triplexes. But, and apartment buildings, but whatever you folks can do to, to help bring more affordable housing, that would be great. And I don't know if that's a designation in here or not, and I don't know if these nineteen thousand two hundred and fifty-one include potential ADUs or not, but whatever you folks can do, we do need more housing and I, I do hope the city will, the council and the Planning Commission will consider amending the ADU law to allow second story ADUs so we don't take up our gardens and trees and bushes and lawns to build more housing, that we just go up and not have to increase the footprint, environmental footprint that's in existence. So thank you for putting all this together. It's obviously very complicated. I don't know all the details, but in general, I would support it. Just make sure that there's ways of facilitating affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item?
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be brief, but the cities may not, I don't think people here realize how dire our economic situation is compared to our deferred maintenance and we absolutely have to, we simply don't have any choice to increase density. And anything to do that is going to hopefully allow the city to continue for maybe another twenty years. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else? All right, seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Colleagues?
I'll start it off. This has been many, many years in the making and I want to commend staff for all the work that they've done on this. It's one of those things, we had the League of Cities basically here earlier talking about local control and this and that. This is the opposite of that. This is state mandated, you shall do this. It leaves a really bad taste in my mouth. I think everyone here has talked, we're not happy about it, but there's a lot of ramifications if it doesn't pass. You know, we can lose control over what little we have control over to the state if we don't go along with it, basically. Our city is, by all accounts, too full as it is. We're crammed in and now we got to cram in over nineteen thousand new residences. We've got ADUs that are causing nothing but complaints. The community's in uproar about them. We've got, you know, our, our infrastructure, as we had a speaker here earlier talking about our infrastructure, can't hardly handle the, the, what we have. And now we're going to put nineteen, over nineteen thousand new homes in areas that used to be businesses that we used to go to, to shop. You know, it's just cramming twenty pounds of poop in a ten pound sack, basically. And it's all being dictated by the state. So, you know, unfortunately, if we don't do it, it's like we got a gun to our head right now for this vote. It really is. Either you do it or we're going to cost your community millions of dollars, lawsuits, we're going to take over, control, we'll do whatever, right? So anyway, that being said, I'm not real happy about this, but.
On the line, just real quick, just for the laypeople out there, basically, the city's not building anything. We're required by the state to provide zoning and overlay, overlay maps on where we could possibly build these units. We don't build anything. It's going to be developers and builders that build these places, whether they're multifamily or single family, whether they qualify for low income, which I'm sure affordable, we'll say affordable housing, but it's basically a state mandate that each city has to deal with, with their own Rena numbers. It's a, it's a, it's a large number for the next ten years or so, but we're just basically providing the policy moving forward that we have the certain areas within our city that we've looked at and studied for years. Our staff has been dealing with this for years and years and we've picked certain areas where this would be the most beneficial for all to build these places if they are built. Again, it's not going to start building tomorrow. It's going to be, you know, builders and people that would be interested in building in the City of Garden Grove to come and do that. So that's a simplification of that.
Very similar with the two council member already talked about. I still remember before becoming a council member, I had that same question and people were talking about, why do we accept more ADUs, you know, more cars, there are no parking, et cetera? But after I have the first briefing by Chris and I asked Chris the same question, like why all the city fight back and we didn't? But learning more that, yes, we have gone through all that, we did everything that we could. And so my note is to say kind of thanks to our staff for make, you know, working on this plan and I have seen several of the article talking about how Garden Grove City have handling the ADU and they actually give the praise to Garden Grove City for what we have done. So just want to say thanks to the staff for a good job that you were able to handle that very well. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
I'll just be real brief and I thank you for the speaker in the public hearing comment section because we do have to bring to light these issues. We do have sewer deficiency problems around the city, which we have a very capable director in Bill Murray who's constantly working on them and rotating our resources to take care of those demands. And we do need to grow our population or density. I agree with that. So I'm going to support this project even though it changes the GPA, but it's really just rectifying what we missed the previous round, but also it meets with the Rena requirements, which I think we're ahead of the curve at this point. So I know we all worked very hard and there were some pushback, but we're at this stage where we're going to vote on this and approve it. So I, I think we have to strike a balance. There, nobody has a crystal ball. We don't know where this is going to take us five, 10, 20 years down the road, but we have to take some concrete actions and this is one of them. Thank you.
I think in some ways it feels like we beat this to death. I know for those of us on this dais and with staff, we've been at this now for years. But for the community, if you're listening this evening and you're hearing about this perhaps for the first time and you're thinking, oh my God, they're having to build nineteen thousand units in our city, please reach out to us on council, reach out to city staff, make sure that you are informed and understand the process. Painful as it is, this is where we're at and so it's better to educate yourself and know moving forward what's going on in the community. So I think with that, I'll just thank staff. This was very complex, very layered, so many details and, and staff has worked tirelessly for years on this, so I thank you for your time.
I think I've said all I could possibly say about this process as someone who's probably been slightly deeper in the weeds as the former SCAB representative and enduring horrible appealing process for this. So I'm choosing to look at the light at the end of the tunnel because if I don't, I might start to cry. As someone whose district is going to be heavily impacted by the increased density, it's an extremely tough pill for me to swallow, but I'm choosing to look at the light of the tunnel and that is, a lot of folks that are complaining about this are people who are fortunate to have backyards and front yards and big enough lots where they understand and grew up with that type of life, where I have spent of my thirty-two years of life probably twenty-six of them in cramped apartments, not being able to live the life that a lot of our residents have had the good fortune and privilege to, to have. And as a young adult, you know, buying my first home, which was what I call, I call it my shoebox, which is five hundred and forty-eight square feet for extremely overpriced. I, my hope is that with the increase of housing, that we will allow for younger generations to be able to move towards the stress, the step of homeownership, to allow for more diversity in our housing stock. But also when we talk about our infrastructure, I think one of the missing realities is that we have a lot of people who are doubled or tripled up in a home or an apartment and that adds stress to our existing infrastructure. While if I had infinite amounts of dollars, I would give them all to Bill Murray to fix our streets, our sewers and a whole host of other issues that I know he has and he's been dealing with by putting Band-Aids on that staff. The Public Works Department has done a tremendous job of making sure that they keep up as best as they can with the resources that they have at hand. But, you know, maybe instead of having an influx of a lot of stuff happening at one point, maybe if it's spread out, it won't be as bad. I don't know, but I will try to think of it that way so that we can digest this whole thing a little bit more and just want to end with by saying thank you so much to staff, especially those who have been on board from the very beginning dealing with this and whether it's discourse, arguments on our end or just internally with trying to figure out how to make this work. You've done a tremendous job and I'm just so glad to have you part of the team and having seen us all the way to the end. And hopefully this gets approved and we can just move on. Thank you.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
Hey, call to vote?
Motion received, seven yes votes. Correction. Motion received, six yes votes, with Councilmember Brightigan voting no.
All right, items for consideration, five A. See you, Marshall.
Item five A is approval of amendment number six to the agreement with CTNT Concrete Paving Inc. for on-call concrete repair and replacement. And Public Works Director Bill Murray is here to provide the report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, City Council's being asked to approve the sixth amendment to an agreement with CTNT Concrete Paving Incorporated. This is a one-time increase of almost a million dollars to cover the costs of repairs to three city-owned flood control channels. This work was approved as part of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-five budget. Last year, these channels were identified as areas of concerns and funds were budgeted in the current budget to repair the channels. Staff was able to make required repairs using CTNT at a significant savings over the projected estimate for the project. Fortunately, all of the channel sidewall repairs were made just prior to the tropical cyclone Hillary's arrival last month. Repairs are still required for the channel floor and they are expected to be completed by the end of November. It should be noted that this work had been delayed due to the high groundwater table where the channels are located, so we couldn't repair the floors because they were underwater. Should the City Council approve the amendment tonight, the contractor can continue work on the channel floors and this project was included in this year's capital improvement plan and will be paid for with general funds. This concludes staff's report and I'm available should you have any questions.
Thanks, Bill. Colleagues, comments, questions or a motion?
Second.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, so I review the, the package when we have the preview before this meeting and one thing jumped out at me was that the original quote that we got was six point one mil, six point one, et cetera. And our public work were able to complete the work with an in-house contractor and approximate five point one mil less than the consultant original estimate. So I want you to, I just want to bring that up to everyone so to see the how much you guys were able to save for our city. So that was it. Good job.
You're welcome.
All right.
You guys did a great job in saving some money.
Just don't tell CTNT.
All right, we have.
I'll second it then, I think Stephanie moved it.
Hey, motion and a second, call to vote. Thanks, Bill.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right, matters, we do have two listed, so we'll go to item six A.
Item six A is update on the comprehensive strategic plan to address homelessness for fiscal years twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-three as requested by City Manager Kim. And we have Director Ursula here to provide that introduction.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Jones and members of the City Council. Kristi Lee, our homeless liaison analyst, will provide an update on the city's comprehensive strategic plan to address homelessness as requested by City Manager Kim. Before I concede the mic to Ms. Lee, I'd like to commend the City of Garden Grove under the leadership of the City Council that you have such a document and that the city has made progress on many of the goals and objectives identified in the plan. Homelessness is a difficult and complicated matter. We would be naive to think that we have all the answers in, in this document. Garden Grove is not alone in our struggle. With that said, I want to mention that we are always learning. We talk to our colleagues in neighboring cities who are dealing with this issue. We research best practices and our strategic plan is a dynamic and living document. So as we learn and hear from our residents and business community, we will adjust and augment our plan as necessary. Tonight's update is merely a snapshot in time to report out on the progress made to date. This is not the end, but the beginning and we realize there is much work to do. I now invite Ms. Lee to provide our update.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. In twenty twenty-one, the original comprehensive strategic plan to address homelessness, or CSPA for short, was approved in response to the rising homeless population and service demands. In this plan, five key goals were proposed focusing on community engagement, homeless prevention, data tracking and street outreach, emergency housing solutions and production and accessibility to affordable and supportive housing. These goals are listed in your staff report. In pursuit of these five goals, we have implemented their associated strategic actions and amended these actions accordingly to maintain relevancy and effectiveness in meeting the present demand for homeless services. The item before you is the updated strategic plan, which presents our latest efforts, accomplished goals and updated strategic action outcomes. From this updated CSPA, I'd like to highlight our collaborative street outreach efforts with the Garden Grove Police Department Special Resource Team, SRT, Bwell OC Mobile Response Team and nonprofit service providers. During fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, this partnership provided assistance to over twelve thousand homeless individuals in Garden Grove. I also want to shed light on some ongoing and newly established programs and projects that have made significant impacts to our city's efforts to address homelessness, such as the Bwell OC Mobile Response, the Cow Optima Street Medicine Program, the Cow Transfencing Improvement Project and the Central City's Navigation Center. Furthermore, the Job First Program and the Workforce Activation Readiness Program, or WARP for short, have contributed to our homeless prevention initiatives through workforce development. And lastly, at the previous City Council meeting, City Manager Kim mentioned that our city is receiving one point nine million dollars from the encampment grant. We will be leveraging these funds to maintain our homelessness services, street outreach and the navigation center. Additional accomplishments can be found in the updated strategic plan. A copy of this document can be found on our webpage and at this time, I will inform the council and the public how to find the updated strategic plan on our webpage. So here is our city homepage at GGCity.org. In the search bar, you will type in addressing. In the search bar, you would type in addressing homelessness. It's the first one right here. Let's do this again.
Technical difficulty.
Okay, so this is the addressing homelessness webpage. Um, we have some of the photos to start. Um, if you scroll down right here, C S P A is the first icon. Once you click on the C S P A icon, you will see the original um, comprehensive strategic plan. Scrolling down, you'll see the updated C S P A for fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three. And if you click on the document, you can proceed to view the document. Okay, so this is the document. Um, I'm gonna go back to our homepage. Um, we also have our addressing homelessness milestones on our homepage. Um, if you scroll all the way down, updated uh, updated comprehensive strategic plan is our latest milestones. If you click on that, it will also lead you to the document. Okay. That's pretty much it. Um, there's no action required for this item. City Council is asked to receive and file the updated C S P A. This concludes my staff report and staff are available for questions.
Thank you, Christie and Ursula for the updates. Any comments, colleagues? Go ahead.
A quick comment. First of all, I appreciate the transparency and information that's provided. Basically, in real time, updates both on the app and the city website. I think it's important for the community to be able to access that information as they're curious about our ongoing efforts. Um, I know for myself personally, I just have to kind of, I I think just also shed awareness to the the public how we're perceived at the county level as well. Um, I'm the president of the Association of California Cities, Orange County, A C C O C. So I'm in the county a lot at different events. And just recently, we were over at the Pace Center in Garden Grove, City Manager Kim and myself, uh, where we had a walk-through with the A C C O C of the Pace Center and the Mobile Mental Health Van and so forth. And it was wonderful to hear so many different electeds from the county, business owners and and the like, really just appreciating, I think, our maverick efforts, piloting different programs, the creativity, the synergy of all these programs. So I think really we're set apart in doing so much as a city, uh, countywide. So I'm really proud of that and I appreciate all of your efforts. Thank you.
Alrighty, thank you guys very much.
We need to receive and file?
I don't think so. It's just an update. Item six B.
Item six B is a report of the recent Anyang Sister City fiftieth anniversary visit and tourism program report took place from September seventeenth through uh, the twenty-third of two thousand twenty-three. And we have Greg Blajic here to provide that report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. Here we go. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. Tonight, we have a report that provides a brief overview of recent uh, visit delegation to Anyang for the city's fiftieth anniversary. Our goal was to strengthen the ties between Garden Grove, South Korea and Japan with a focus on tourism opportunities. So Garden Grove has a strong relationship, sister city relationship with Anyang, South Korea for four decades now. Connections been fostered through various initiatives, including Sister City Association, student exchanges, business meetings and employee exchange programs. We're invited to celebrate the fiftieth anniversary from September seventeenth through the um, twenty-third. So we also had a partnership with Visit Anaheim to promote tourism as part of this mission, including Disney Land, Greatwith Lodge from Garden Grove, Hilton Hampton Homewood Hotels, also from Garden Grove to promote tourism a destination for the Grove District, Garden Grove. Some of the key activities uh, happened in Seoul, Korea, so we had a delegation of city leadership, including Orange County Partners. And we conducted a tourist mission that presented Garden Grove to seventy-five uh, Korean travel trade partners, media groups, which really enhanced the visibility of Orange County and Garden Grove to this country. And it was very positive. Uh, we had lots of other um, meetings within this uh, trade travel mission in South Korea. Also in Tokyo, Japan, I was able to also have another uh, partnership with the same group. Uh, we went to Tokyo between September nineteenth through the twenty-third and conducted also dynamic sales mission, including presenting to major Japanese travel travel trade companies, media, and resulting in significant social media coverage. Uh, also, we had uh, another, a part of the trip was also opening ceremony from Anyang from the twenty-third, uh, twentieth to the twenty-third, which the City Council took part in, and I think Lisa Kim was gonna update on this portion.
Thank you, Greg. Um, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, attached to your staff report noted on page three oh five is just a recap of the meetings that the council delegation attended during the tourism program. And in addition, we broke down the tourism participants for the Anyang program. Um, I would also note that um, along with the city of Garden Grove, Anyang extended an invitation to four other sister city partner relationships that they have. So we were joined in our Anyang delegation with the city's uh, Anyang city sister uh, delegation from Hampton, Virginia. Uh, Anyang City China with a population of five point four million um, residents, Komiki, Japan and Torozawa, Japan. So um, it was a full delegation of sister city represented and celebrating um, Anyang's fiftieth um, celebration. I would also note during the tourism program of the uh, travel uh, during September seventeenth through uh, September nineteenth, there were no majority of council attending during the city-related tourism activity. While during the ceremonial activity at Anyang, all the city council delegation member participated. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll go around the horn for matters, starting with Kim.
Benja Loosa.
Sorry about that.
First, I'd just like to say, you know, yesterday we were able to attend the Home to Sweet's grand opening, which was marvelous to see. It's looking amazing. Um, I got a little tour and I'm just so excited uh, to see this happen. South of the twenty-two freeway and all the tourism that it's gonna bring and expand south of Harbor for the district, for District Six specifically. Um, and to have it be the first city to use own hotel in our city as well is also great to highlight. I also just want to call to attention, uh, we did do proclamations for domestic violence awareness and also last meeting for the month of October of pregnancy and infant loss awareness. And so just want to highlight those two items as they are ones that I brought forward and are deeply personal to me. And just a reminder to everyone to check on those people in your life that you know may be going through something or have experienced any one of those traumas in their life. This month in particular can be very triggering for people and so we just want to make sure that we lend our our ears and hearts and hugs and just care and compassion to our community uh, during this time and that's all that I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Stephanie.
Thank you. Um, just a couple of quick things. Uh, this past Saturday, there was a gala for the John Reynolds Youth Canine Support Team at the Gem Theater. It was a wonderful night. I was very proud to be on their little volunteer committee that helped uh, put that on. And I think everyone that was there, I know Councilmember, I'm sorry, Mayor Potem Brightigan was there and City Manager Lisa Kim and her husband were there. And it was a wonderful crowd of people, all there really to support the dogs and the amazing work that they do in our community and in our schools. Uh, and I think everyone had a really fun time and hopefully they raised a lot of money. I think they're at um, some type of a conference back east right now, but I look forward to hearing how much they raised and how truly successful the evening was for them. And just uh, pause for students is their handle on social media and you can donate there if you weren't able to attend. Um, also, October fourth, um, besides it being my daughter's birthday, uh, was Walk to School Day. And I just really appreciated um, the Garden Grove Motors team out at different schools, passing out stickers, high-fiving kids. Uh, at my daughter's school, they had the Bear Cat was out there, so that was a big deal for all the kids to get to take a picture in front of it. And it's just a great way for them to engage with families and be out in the community, so I appreciate that. And a couple more quick things, um, having that homeless and strategic plan uh, presentation, it kind of made me just think about our special resource team and also those that are in Public Works that are constantly helping with the cleanup of our community. That is gritty, hard day in and day out work. Sometimes I'm sure it feels like Groundhog Day for them because they're dealing with some really tough situations. Plus, just the concern of maybe bringing something, uh, an illness or something home to their families as well. It is hard work. And I think just taking that time to truly appreciate what they're doing and they do it with a smile on their face. I think they really, it's a passion project. I think they love what they do. And I just want to make sure also that as a, as a council and as a city, we're highlighting that and allowing the community to understand what it is that they do day in and day out and to thank them. So I don't know if in the future if it's possible and I don't know if this has to be an item to vote on or not, but I would love if we could have a community spotlight kind of for them, for special resource and the Public Works team. I'm sure we've done these things before, but just to continually bring that back and bring that awareness to our residents to just say thank you and to let the residents know how hard they're working for them. I would really appreciate that. Thank you.
Go.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and it was quite an honor and privilege to travel with our delegation to our sister city, Anyang. Uh, while there, I did pose a question that didn't really get answered, but I'll answer it. The question is, um, is the sister city of your sister city, your sister city? So there, we got a yes answer. So it's spirit anyway, right? So a shout out to all our sister cities who are sister cities with the Anyang and particularly to Mayor Choi, who had a very, uh, very good bond with our mayor, Steve Jones. And um, we were treated to Drone Light Show in the Central Park of Anyang. And um, it was, it was amazing. I'd, I'd love to have that here if Mayor Jones can make it happen. But a big shout out to, um, yeah, right. Our other sister city in Hampton, Virginia, we met the mayor and their delegation. Um, and I'd love to invite them to our city and and um, they're, uh, I think we're the Hampton of the West Coast. So we have that bond with our American city also. Um, lastly, I felt like it was home away from home. It was, it's very, uh, traveling in South Korea um, a second time after ten years was amazing and we met a lot of people who have been here to our state, California and to Orange County, particularly to Garden Grove. They have very fond memories of coming here. And it was nice to have these exchanges with them. Uh, and um, uh, they will also be here. So um, another question I posed was, um, what happens in South Korea? Actually, eventually comes back to Koreatown. That's a saying I just made up because we're gonna have a lot of good things from South Korea coming to our city in our county. And I I just can't wait. And one of it is uh, the Korean World Business Convention this weekend. The kickoff is tomorrow. And I would invite everybody to come. It's very easy to download the um, the Q R for the the entry pass. So I look forward to see everybody there, um, starting tomorrow. Thank you.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Um, I have a couple items. So um, on Friday, I uh, were invited to attend or speak to senior student at Bosak Grande about um, um, career path. And so I talked to them, shared with them about, you know, what we do here as council member and also encouraged them to participate, speak up if they see something that we could do better for our city. Um, I also shared with them about the investment benefit. At the end, two of the students were interested and reached out and then actually one of the students reached out to our staff and would like to get um, maybe um, our council or mayor to do some type of recommendation so that they could um, uh, apply for the official program. But I know they have to go up to the, um, I think, um, the C N A or something like that. But we, we will um, have that conversation later and try what we can do to help. Um, second thing is that thanks to the resident who brought up the issue about the homeless at ninety-nine cent at Brokus and Westminster. Before that, every time I see a homeless there, I, you know, like just like many of us, just say, okay, what can we do to help them? But this time it kind of eye-opening where they said, you know, this is a problem. They are actually on a private property. And that's also mean that when they are on private property, if they don't report to our police, then our police cannot do anything because that's a private. And so um, I was there, um, met the individual and B Well was there. Make a long story, sorry, um, the couple day later, I have a ride along with Sergeant Brown. And hearing that story, it's just eye-opening. First, um, the S R T team, every single day, they have to try ten load up the van, um, the load truck, uh, the van that to take the trash from the homeless that left there and they have to do that every single day. Just pick up the trash and throw them away. And then also, um, whenever they, like each day, they would probably do about nine arrests. But then whenever they arrest a person or a homeless or a trespass, um, two hour later, they're gonna be back on the street again. And so I don't think that, like, we talk about it about that with the resident, but there not much that we can do unless, um, you know, let's just try to do some changes in term of the law and do something else. Um, we share with them all the things that our Garden Grove City have been doing, you know, try to do beyond a boat to fix the issue or, or, you know, do what we can. And then, um, so the third thing, uh, I met a group of resident at Trash and Mickey Street. Very similar issue about the homeless and I know that council member here talked about that at the last um, council meeting. And uh, um, they shared with us assault, uh, robbery on the camera. And it happened right on that street just a couple days ago, but they go through that daily and it's just very scary. And so um, they did file a couple um, complaint about court enforcement and they would like the business around there to do something to cut off, for example, you know, the wifi, put the locks it that way, the homeless not gonna go there and use the free wifi or use the electric and things like that. So um, I already talked to our staff, Mr. Lisa, and we'll take action and see um, what we can do to answer to our resident because um, actually they probably look watching right now and want to see what our staff gonna do and they want to get the action um, from our staff. Uh, number four, I attend the Moon Festival at downtown Garden Grove with council member Chodovin and Miss Lisa. Um, I love our Garden Grove City and that's it, our downtown Garden Grove. So I always try to see what can we do to bring the business or bring more activity there. I talked to council, um, Chodovin, and he said, yeah, we would, you know, love to do, you know, tagging to do something together down there. And uh, in the past, I did try to have different group to, you know, different event to go to the um, uh, the M Theater. Um, one thing I want to say that when I go to other city for the um, like Orange City, for the state of the city, people always ask like, okay, what, what are the council member here like? I always proud to say that every single council here worked very well in term of that. We all want the best for our city and that's it, that's our focus. I don't see any, you know, fight anything. It's just like, what can we do to to support and to help? So which is, I love and I feel so honored to be here with you guys. Um, next one, I want to say thanks to Tim, Dina, Monica and Lisa on giving out fifty thousand dollar check to one of the business owner um, for the job retention. So I only been in this council for about ten months now and that process took less than six months. So I want to bring this up and for any business out there that need help, please reach out to our staff and they will try to, you know, see what we could help, but I see different program our city have um, to support our businesses. On October twenty-four, there will be a senior health fair. Um, last time, the Moving Forward Group came here and mentioned about that. If any uh, council member here would like to support, please let me know. And we'll ask um, our staff to send it out to, to you um, for invitation. Uh, I am planning and leading a event, making fifty thousand um, instant meal package for hunger. So if any council member here that would like to, you know, partner and tag along doing something like that, please let me know. And that's it for me. Do you want to say happy birthday to Mayor John? That's it?
Thank you, John.
Happy birthday, Steve. Just a couple of quick little things. Um, I think myself and every, a lot of people got their fill of the air show was quite spectacular. Even if you lived in Garden Grove and you didn't drive to Huntington Beach, I know on the, the north central side and west Garden Grove, we got quite a show a couple Saturdays ago just from our backyards. So I think that was very successful. It was, it was fun to see that going by. I could literally see the bottom of the, was it the Angels? It's the, the Air Force, Thunderbirds, Air Force, right? Air Force, so go Thunderbirds. We also had the, the community cleanup a couple Saturdays ago here. We also had the community cleanup a couple Saturdays ago here next to the city, next to the community center. I participated in that and got rid of some documents that needed to be shredded that I've been carrying around in my trunk for like two months to figure out where I could take them, and then I knew this date was coming up, so I took, and I think that was pretty successful. I came towards the end of it purposely, so I could see how it went, and they had a lot of dumpsters filled up and a lot of shredding. In fact, they were pretty full on the shredding thing. District 2 residents might have seen, you know, Brookhurst is restriped from Cotella to Chapman with nice three new lanes in each direction with the bike lane and some parking, and new red curbs in areas and fresh paint, and so I'm glad that got done. Thank you very much to Public Works and even our third-party agencies that we've helped with grant money to get these things done. People don't realize what it takes to get all this done and actually have state money and other grants that we get, so we don't have to use the general fund. And let's see, thirdly, I know I had something else here. I just dropped, dropped out of my mind, so I'll leave it over to George. Thank you very much.
George.
Yeah, first of all, happy birthday, Mayor Jones. 21 years old today. We're glad to see you. No, with that being said, we had a speaker in here earlier talking about infrastructure improvements, and I just wanted to, you know, he's already left, but I wanted to relay that for the first time in my memory, this year, council prioritized infrastructure improvement as a top council priority. So I just want the public to realize, we are addressing this, these issues, and you probably noticed, a lot of stuff is actually getting done this year. The streets are tore up, the sewers are being tore up, the flood control channels are getting fixed. So there's a lot going on, and it is a council priority this year, and I don't recall, at least in my limited memory, I don't recall that ever being a council priority prior to this year. So I want to thank my colleagues for making that a priority, and we are on it. Halloween is coming up, you know, and we had Senator Janet Winn here talking about fentanyl poisoning and all the scares and stuff that go along with trick-or-treating are, you know, part of that recipe, unfortunately. One of the things, I just, make sure you check your kids' candy. If you're buying candy for trick-or-treaters, you know, the little bite-size or even full-size if you're rich. I always liked to go to the full-size places when I was a kid, right? But the wrapped candies is important, so it makes it easy for the parents so they can look and make sure there's been no tampering. You know, the days when we were little, when people used to make candied apples and, you know, popcorn balls and stuff like that, well, you really can't do that in today's world. And, you know, I just, I just hope some of the older folks who are seeing this realize that. And it's nothing wrong with it, it's just, there's been so many things over the years, and parents are real leery about letting their kids actually eat these treats from strangers. So, you know, my advice, please, just, I know it's not as heartfelt when you don't make it yourself, but just go buy some store-bought candies. That's the best way to go with it, and it makes it easier for all concerned, and it makes it a little safer for the kids as well. And I think that's about it.
Mr. Mayor, I remembered my last thing.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to promote, you know, people to download the new updated version of our app, because that's the easiest way, because I was thinking of painting and getting over that graffiti. I know we all have a lot of issues with graffiti, so download that new Garden Grove app, updated app, and you can report a lot of stuff there, trash, bulky items, graffiti. That's the quickest way to get it to city and get it corrected. Thank you. That was it.
Thanks. City Manager Lisa Kim.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. I wanted to also note that the Asian Pacific Festival, also previously known as the Korean Ariang Festival, will be coming to Garden Grove Park starting Thursday, October 12 through Sunday, October 15. It's its 39th annual festival that will showcase the rich beauty of pageantry of Korean and Vietnamese culture. There'll be entertainment, carnival rides, K-pop, and over 70 specialty booths, a food court, and lots of foodie favorites. So definitely stop by. And our Garden Grove Park address is 9301 Westminster Boulevard. And lastly, I know everyone's highlighting the weekend activity, but council member John O'Neill and I hung out on Main Street at the Elvis Festival, and it was an extraordinary tribute of music. I wanted to thank Jennifer Stewart, part of our Downtown Business Association, and Joe Lloyd for just coordinating this lovely festival. There was music, everyone was dancing, and lots of Elvis all through Main Street in all different sizes, and so that was a fun event for us.
Thank you. General Counsel, any reportable action?
Mayor, the City Council did meeting close session earlier this evening, and there is no reportable action out of that meeting.
Thank you, colleagues and everyone who attended, and with that, we will stand adjourned. Thank you.